I'll call the meeting to a war. Would you all rise and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
My Fledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening's meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by McCann and is also being recorded by Horizon. With that, we'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is unanticipated. Does any board member have anything under unanticipated?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon.
Charlie, can we get an update on the Valley Road? There were some drainage issues down there or drainage easement issues?
Yeah, there's an easement that is being worked out with the Martinsons, you know, in conjunction with, I guess, another house they want to build up there. Andy's been working with them. I think it's just a matter of getting those issues sorted out so that, you know, the easement can be constructed and functioning, so.
What about the road? The road is, I understand, the road's in deteriorated condition?
Yeah, it is. It has been patching it and, you know, it's like all, a lot of our other roads, unfortunately.
Okay.
But Andy has been working with them and with their engineer to, you know, to work through it and so we can move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience have anything under unanticipated? Announcements and recognition. I have one. The Braga family asked me to thank members of the town who made this weekend a little easier for them. One was the secretary and the town manager's assistant Caroline and Jackie for getting, making hall available and expediting the liquor license. That was a big help and something they didn't have to worry about. They also wanted me to thank the local police department, who provided support during the lengthy procession for Jim this weekend, and for the fact that they treated Jim's body with respect after the accident and remained with him until the medical examiner picked him up. So they wanted me to express their thanks to all the community for their support during this time. I also want to thank Mr. Branigan and the student council, who came down after the luncheon and cleaned up the hall for us. They wanted me to express their thanks. Anyone else? Mr. Fral.
I just want to say thank you to the Middleborough Lakeville Herring Commission. Those guys went down on Sunday afternoon and jumped right into the river with chainsaws and ropes and pulleys and cleared one of the trees that had fallen down during the storms and was just below the dam. So it was cold work, but it was a lot of fun if you like that type of thing, and I do. But they got the, they went down there on their own without anybody asking them and just did what they was, what they thought was best for the herring run. And they do that all the time. They're really an unsung commission. They're down there during the herring run all day, you know, keeping an eye on the fish, telling everybody who's down there all the information about it. And I just really wanted to say thanks to them because they really do a great job for all, but.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience? With that, I need a, I'd like to take a motion from the board to authorize the chair as designee to sign all the necessary warrants this week.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. It's unanimous. Minutes. Approval of the minutes. The regular minutes for March 11th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Extentions? One. One extension. Three in favor. And the executive session minutes for March 11th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Extentions? One. Three to one. Moving down to new business. First item is vote to open the annual town meeting warrant, add an article and close the warrant, raid the Pierce trustees.
Motion approved.
So first one is a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant?
Motion to open the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it. We have a letter here from Donald Atkins, a member of the Board of Trustees. I am writing on behalf of the Pierce trustees to request that you place the following article on the warrant for the annual town meeting. We realize it is late in the warrant process, but the probate court only notified the trust this past week that it had acted favorably on the nomination. This is the language that has traditionally been used for this purpose, to see if the town will vote to assent to the appointment of Robert M. DeRozio as trustee under the will of Thomas S. Pierce for the benefit of the public library of the town of Middleborough and as a trustee under the will of Thomas S. Pierce for the benefit of the town of Middleborough without furnishing a surety or sureties on his official bond as trustee under wither of said trust. So that's, that's the article they'd like to add.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. DeRozio here.
Mr. McKinnon?
Would he like to address this?
What?
Mr. DeRozio here. Would he like to address this in any way, shape, or form?
Unless you have a question? No, I'm all set.
He's all set. Thank God. I didn't see you back there. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Motion to close the warrant?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the warrant. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it. It's unanimous. The warrant is now closed. Next item is vote to issue a one-day, all-alcohol beverage liquor license for the baterian services of New England retroactive to March 16th, 2013, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Town Hall.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just so that everyone knows, this is the one-day liquor license for the luncheon that was held here sadly for the Braga funeral. Real motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it. Next item is vote to approve the new access path named Reading Path in place of Reading Way.
The reason for this is when we're talking about a private way of this kind, we didn't want to give anybody the impression that it might now or ever in the future be a public way, and the use of the term "path" is a clear indication that these are private.
So this is going to be called Reading Path?
Reading Path.
Much pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Certainly wouldn't like to have them sitting here 200 years from now saying, "Damn it, if they ever can figure out our street, maybe we can work on this path thing."
Next item is vote to reappoint Constance Connie Miller to the Agricultural Commission for a three-year term expiring June 13th, 2016. We have a letter from Connie Miller expressing her desire to serve on the commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it. It's unanimous. Next item, this is a carryover from a discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, is vote to support letter to the town's legislation delegation on infrastructure funding. Just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, the State House is going to propose a bill to come up with a dedicated revenue source to support infrastructure maintenance, roads and bridges throughout the state. The need is there. MMA supports this in terms of increasing the Chapter 90 funding. Chapter 90 funding is used by local communities to maintain our local roads. Basically, that is the only source of funding to maintain our local roads. So our town manager has drafted a letter based on the comments the previous week. I will read this letter so that everyone who doesn't have a copy will understand what this letter is saying. It's being directed to state, to Senator Pacheco, Representative Coulter, Gifford, and Oral, and the letter reads as follows. "The Board of Selectmen ask that you support a limited revenue package dedicated exclusively to maintain and repair our current transportation infrastructure. Like many municipalities, the town of Middleborough relies entirely on Chapter 90 funds to repair its local roads. The current Chapter 90 funding levels are insufficient to keep up with the repair of 174 miles of roads. Many of our roads are in deplorable condition. The proposal to increase Chapter 90 funding to $300 million would add more than $800,000 to our road budget and allow us to immediately improve a number of important local roads. As you know, we have long advocated for improvements to the Middleborough Rotary and the widening of Route 44 from Carver to the Rotary. While these projects are extremely important to the economic development of the town and the entire region, we are also aware that they are very expensive. TIP funding alone will not be sufficient to finance these important projects. Our support for any additional revenue source to maintain and improve our existing transportation infrastructure is with the understanding that this new revenue will be dedicated solely for that purpose and that the Middleborough Rotary improvements designed by McKinnon..." McMahon. Thank you. "...and associates will be funded within the next five years. Thank you for your continued advocacy on our behalf. Sincerely signed by the Board of Selectmen." So I think this letter incorporates all of the issues that were of concern to some members of this board in terms of indicating that it be dedicated solely for the purposes of infrastructure improvement, that it, that the Rotary project be on the list for this funding within the five-year timeframe. Mr. Chair. I'll turn this, ask for comments from the board to get on us.
Motion to approve.
They have a motion. Grab a second. I'm going to second this again, as I did previously, opening up the discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Fral.
Mr. Fral.
From all accounts, this revenue package is going to go through. It's supported by the Speaker, it's supported by a number of different state reps that I've spoken to already, it's supported by the MMA. There's no point in voting against this. It doesn't help us in any way, shape, or form. It only hurts us. It's going to go through. We might as well be on the winning side of it. It can only help us. I've spent countless hours advocating for a Rotary, a solution to the Rotary, and time and time again, I'm told that there's, there's no money for it. And I understand that. We all know that there is money for it. We're just not on the list yet. Voting against transportation funding isn't going to get us on the list. I'm sure that, I can't guarantee that it is going to get us on the list, but I guarantee you that if we vote against transportation funding, we're going to get exactly what we voted for. We're going to get the tax increase, and we're not going to get a dime of it. I don't see any point. If you want to stand on principle, that's great. I don't think Middleborough can afford to stand on principle on this any longer. That's just my opinion.
Anyone else like to comment on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKinnon.
The Rotary design by McMahon and Associates, that was our plan?
Yeah, that's our plan.
Okay. That's the one that the state doesn't want to do?
Well, still, we haven't convinced them to do yet, but hopefully we will.
So that's the one the state doesn't want to do?
Well, remember.
They said no.
Well, remember, it's only one person at this point who said no. I haven't heard this from anybody else in Mass DOT. In fact, you know, I've heard unofficially that there is a fair amount of support within Mass DOT for this design, although no one's going to go on the record at this point.
Here's my problem. We're asking to go, we're asking the taxpayers to take yet another hit for an unknown amount of money because there is no bill stated yet. So we're asking to allow our legislators to raise our taxes to an unknown amount, for an unknown, unknown amount, with the hopes that somebody will go on record as saying that our plan is a good plan, in the hopes that they will eventually put this on the tip so that we can move it forward. I, I don't think there's 37 mil, well, I don't know. There might be $37 million laying around that the state is wasting right now. The state has increased its salaries, the number of people earn the payroll from, since The state's spent $1 million more in office equipment last year than they did the previous year. They went ahead and bought a couple of hundred chairs, and there's 100 of them sitting in a room, not being used. It's nice that they bought the chairs, but that's taxpayer money that's being wasted. There's a guy, I mean, there's a guy that's getting a pension for $343,000 a year. That's his pension. I'm pretty certain that they waste a whole lot of money up there, and we're going to give them more? Yeah, on principle, I say no. I say no to more taxes. Let us use that money that they've got more efficiently and effectively. They've taken a lot of that TIP money, the yes-tax money that people pay, and they're using it to support the MBTA. And that's the money that should be going for the infrastructure, not for the MBTA. When they incorporated MBTA into Mass DOT, that was the plan, so they could have a bunch of money to pour into the MBTA. That's not helping these folks out here that have to drive around, and that's not helping our roads. So I say no to this. Unfortunately, I can't support this. They're taking our money, and we're not going to see anything for it anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Anyone else? Well, I'm going to speak in favor of supporting this letter for some of the reasons that Mr. Fral indicated. We've been trying for years to get this Rotary completed, and one of the issues that always pops up is even if we have an approved plan, there is no funding source for the project. I think this letter states our position very clearly, that we're only supporting this if the Rotary project is on the list to be, to be funded within the next five years. We also have another crack at this. If the, if the actual bill that comes out doesn't suit our needs or the wording that we suggested, we can always send another letter in saying, "We don't agree with this proposed bill for those reasons." I'll also indicate to you that the MMA supports this bill, which is a very conservative organization and doesn't generally support increased taxes of any kind. However, they are supporting this because of the need. Our infrastructure is falling apart in Massachusetts. If we don't address it, so goes business development. They'll go elsewhere. They'll go to other states. We need to address it. And I agree, there's probably lots of waste at the state level, but this infrastructure can't wait until they sort out that waste and decide to cut it. I mean, they haven't done it in 100 years. What makes us, what makes us think they're going to do it in time to repair, to do the work that's required, to repair our roads and bridges before someone gets hurt, or it just stops commercial development in our area altogether? So for those reasons, I'm in support of this letter.
Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Spata.
I'll get you.
I contacted Representative Royal's office today, and while she was not in, I did talk with her aide. They reached out to find out where we were on the list, and while they did not get an answer from Transportation, they did get an answer from Surfed, which says we're four, number four out of 24 projects. So I mean, if there's any funding for anything, it should come. They also contacted the Transportation Department and asked point-blank to one of the Assistant Secretaries that would a decision like this be political, like if we were not supporting the tax, that we would not get our fair share? And they said absolutely not.
And you believe that?
No.
I don't believe that. I don't believe that for one minute, but that's okay. I appreciate you, but I appreciate you.
I did, I reached out to Rep. Representative Gifford's office. I did not get a return call, but her track record is not to vote against her leadership, which is not in support of additional taxes. I mean, we have to vote for the town, but if our delegation is against it and we're for it, that sends a mixed message as well. So you know what? Again, I'm repeating myself from two weeks ago. Mr. Healy, town manager a couple before Charlie, did an analysis and showed us that they're paying capital, operating expenses out of the capital budget. They continue to do that. So if they didn't get the money, would they let the infrastructure fall apart and hurt the citizens, or would they finally address the fact that they're spending capital budget for operating expenses? I mean, clearly, just like the federal government is doing, if they don't get their way, they're going to put the pain on the citizens. But I would hope that the people in Boston would finally realize that you can't spend capital money on operating expenses and address the operating expense versus what bridges fall down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Fral.
I'm not in favor of raising taxes, but the opportunity to get a solution to the Rotary problem presents an opportunity to increase our economic development in Middleborough, which will help our tax base. That's the end game for this, is to improve our tax base by working on our economic development areas. And that's one of our main areas that we cannot develop because we can't get the Rotary fixed. If we can make the Rotary a lot more palatable to businesses to come in here, we have an opportunity to add to our, our tax base, create some economic development, and maybe not pass this, these increased taxes on to our citizenship on a yearly basis as things continue to get worse and worse. Let's build a better buffer zone with the commercial revenue. It's not going to happen unless we get that Rotary. I don't understand why we wouldn't support this. I mean, can we all agree that it's going to go through? I mean, does anybody honestly think that this is not going to go through? Because if you think it's going to go through and you vote against it, you're just shooting us in the foot.
Thank you. Judy.
I just want to say, I need a little, Judy Bigelow Costa.
Thank you.
First off, I need a little bit of clarity because I was sitting over there and I couldn't hear the letter. Okay? So I just need a little bit of clarity on understanding. You are discussing taxes being raised?
At the state level.
At the state level, correct?
Yes.
And is this because you want funding for the Rotary?
We want funding for all of our infrastructure, but including the Rotary. If this bill passes, they will increase Chapter 90 money by $300 million a year for the entire state. That means $800,000 more a year for the town of Middleborough, which will help us maintain more of our local roads in better shape than they are now.
Okay. Do you feel as though by doing this letter that it is going to help our town at all in respect to what information we can get from Boston in the state level as infrastructure for us, or should we in fact be waiting for a new administration?
Well, personally, I wouldn't vote for this if I didn't think it would help us locally. So I'm supporting this because I believe it will help us locally now as opposed to waiting. So that's, that's why I'm supporting this. I'll let the other board members speak for themselves, but for me, if I didn't think it would help us locally, I wouldn't support it. I'm not a big fan of raising taxes either, but these projects are expensive. Our infrastructure is falling apart, and the state, for whatever reason, is not directing revenue toward this need. This bill, if passed, is a dedicated revenue source that can only be used for infrastructure improvements.
Okay. Will there be a guarantee in it if it passes? That Middleborough will get a help, get help?
Well, there is no guarantee what the final bill will look like. We indicated in our letter that I just read that we, our support is predicated on the fact that the Rotary will be funded within the next five years. So we're expressing that in our support. If the bill doesn't, there is no draft of the bill out yet. This is purely a proposal in someone's head, and they're talking about it, but there's no bill on the floor yet or hasn't even been drafted. So if that bill comes out and it doesn't indicate what we've indicated here, then we've got another bite at the apple, and we can say we don't support. The bill is drafted.
If we were to go.
But as Mr. Fral said, and some people view this as being blackmail. We're being blackmailed here. If we don't support this bill, and it's going to pass anyway, my feeling is that it will pass, and we, and we stand opposed to it, that it doesn't put the town of Middleborough in very good light when they determine the priorities of projects to be funded.
In all honesty, I don't think we stand in very good light right now anyways.
Mr. Chair.
And I feel as though we might be shooting ourselves in the foot, but that's only my opinion.
And I guess I would just respond that since, for the last four years since I've been involved in this Rotary project, they've always said, the people we've talked to, is even if we get a plan, there's no funding for the project. So somehow, we've got to come up with a revenue source, and I think this is a possibility. And it's in its early stages, why, why not support it and see where it goes? I mean, they have done this before. They've done it for the schools, the school trust fund. It's a dedicated fund to help build new schools, and they've done that. They've shown that they have the discipline to do that in the past. Hopefully, they'll have the will to, to stand up to what they say in this bill as well and be disciplined enough to keep their hands off it except for infrastructure improvements, roads and bridges.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fral.
I think it's important to remember this is, there's two parts to this. Another $800,000 to our Chapter 90 funding. I get emails from constituents all the time who ask me to drive down the road that they're talking about, and luckily, I drive a four-wheel-drive Jeep because some of these roads are impassable, especially this one, they're without one. So I mean, this is, this is a lot of money coming into Middleborough for our Chapter 90. I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't support that.
That's pretty much guaranteed.
We, I mean, I don't know if there's another town that has 174 miles of roads, so I don't under, I don't think that there's another town that this could be more important to. Everybody knows that Plymouth's bigger, but Miles Standis has got all that, and those aren't public roads. So if there's another town that has more public roads that they have to take care of than Middleborough, I'm unaware of it, but I, we could certainly use some help in fixing up our roads. And if you don't believe me, drive down Cedar Street or Precinct Street.
I'll have to go there, five, just go down Station Street.
Go down Route 28.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKinnon.
Yes. Look, we're asking...
Look, we're asking, we're given the permission to raise taxes and they don't even, there's no, there's no number that they're giving us to say, well, this is the tax amount we're looking for.
I think what they're asking us for is the support to create a dedicated source of revenue for infrastructure improvements. When the final bill is drafted, we'll know what that number is and what the revenue source will be, whether it be gasoline tax, sales tax. They haven't, and at that point, we can again express our support or non-support of the item. But I think what they're asking us for now is for support of the concept. Are we willing to listen to a proposal for a dedicated revenue source for our infrastructure? And that's what this letter says, is yeah, we're willing to listen.
No, we're willing to support.
Support.
This says we're willing to support.
To support a dedicated revenue source.
Where willing to support what? There's no number. I mean, Charlie mentioned last week, Charlie mentioned two weeks ago, it was $600 million? Was that your, the magic number?
That's what was being discussed at a legislative breakfast that I attended.
Which is what they bring in now. What they bring in now for tax money for fuel stacks.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's right.
So they're going to, what they're looking at is doubling fuel tax money.
If that's what they.
So we'll go from, go from, what? Thirty-seven cents a gallon to 74 cents a gallon?
Well, we're not talking, nobody said it's a gas tax either. You can't say, we don't have a number, but we know it's going to be a gas tax. If it's ambiguous, then it's ambiguous. But it can't be specific when you want it and then nonspecific when you don't.
Well, I want to, I want to, I would like more specifics than just raise my taxes.
We're supporting the idea of a dedicated revenue fund.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Spataw.
I'd make a motion to amend.
You already have a motion.
Okay, so you.
You want to amend it? What do you want amended? To not support?
No, no, I'd amend to table it until we have the specific bill.
Sure, go ahead.
And I'd ask for a second on that.
Second.
Obviously, it's not going to pass in the current form and you don't want to, you don't want to take a vote that fails. So why don't we wait and see what the specific bill is? And hopefully, we'll have time to act on it before, you know, it's already passed. That would be my recommendation.
And we have a motion. Did we get a second to table?
I did.
All those in favor to table?
Aye.
We got three. All those.
I didn't vote for it.
I didn't vote for it. So you got three in favor, all those against?
Aye.
Three to what's tabled until whenever.
No, not till whenever, till there's a bill that's, under which we know specific.
Okay, moving down to the next agenda items. Another example. Dan Badger here. Come on down, Dan. We're a community service and he's going to give us a little update on the Nemaska River Stewartship Project. Welcome, Dan.
Since I am a new face to some of you, I took the liberty of making some copies of some information about me and about the project for you. Looking for here as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Dan Badger. I am the Director of Badger Wilderness Guides. We are a nonprofit outdoor education and recreational therapy service. Purpose for, by the way, I wanted to thank, thank you for giving me some time to talk about this project, which is the Nemasket River Stewartship Project. Our goal is to, one, and I'll explain the techniques for what we plan on doing, but what we'd like to do is play a part in cleaning up the river for the purposes of making it a safer place for recreational use. And also to provide Leave No Trace Training as a gift to the community. The funding for this project, I always like people to know I am not here to ask for money. And I am here to, I am here, however, to ask for community involvement as I believe community service, environmental stewardship is a, is a, should be an inclusive activity. Real quick, we have already in place grant funding for some of this through, through a couple of local banks, the American Canoe Association. And we will be getting more, more support from some local organizations. A couple that are confirmed will be organizations like Leave No Trace themselves. LeaveNoTrace.org is in my notations there, so you, I encourage you to read up on the benefits of being associated with them. I am, I have in the past sought guidance and will continue to seek guidance from the Towns Conservation Committee, who has promised a letter of support for this project after reviewing the concept last year. And I will be also seeking guidance for techniques so as to not disturb local wildlife, certainly not local residents, and to make this as effective and non-impact as possible. So we will be seeking guidance from the State DEP, the local EPA, excuse me, the federal EPA, who I've had some connections with in grant writing, and of course, the town of Middleborough itself. The other, the other portion of this in terms of support, which make them up in terms of liability issues and the like, I will have, all leaders from this program will be certified EMTs or paramedics or above. And in terms of pod leaders, I know amongst you, there is a main guide. I am a fellow main guide as well in the rafting, in the rafting industry. And I can tell you, we're going to have the same format as this. And just in brief, to explain, we'll have a trip leader in the front. We have a medical leader in the rear of three to five groups of canoes. We want to make this also a family-friendly event and not a one-weekend event. I'd like to stagger this for three, three to four different days throughout the summer between Memorial and Labor Day. And so as to be able to include as many people who want to get involved in the community as possible. We have a donation of up to 100 life preservers, both children-friendly and adult life preservers for anybody participating. And we will take up to 10 canoes at a, 10 to 12 canoes at a time, based on the trip leader support that I have in place now. And we will also be supplying radio communication equipment between the trip leaders and the like. My gift, Badger Wilderness Guides' gift to the community, is to ultimately be able to train at least five and up to 10 Leave No Trace instructors. So that they will be able to eventually, once this, once the project leaves the nest, as it were, you will have community, community folks that are interested in keeping the Nemasket as beautiful as it can be and be able to continue training more volunteers. And I will always, my organization will stay involved at the comfort level of the community for consultation and continued education in this effort.
All right. Thank you. It sounds like a worthwhile project. When do you intend to start it?
About this time last year.
About this time last year? So you've already started this or you?
Well, I've done some, I've done some scouting of the river. I've identified three targeted areas, just to, just to break it down and so that it's, it's nothing I think that's going to happen in one year. And that's a good problem in that we leave things open to build, to kick off next year, maybe even earlier. In terms of the grant support, I already have some funding that I got last year for the American Canoe Association because we were transitioning into trying to become a nonprofit for a lot of other ventures that are, that are happening. I held off and just had a bunch of friends do some paddling with me and we just literally picked up some garbage on the, on the riverbanks. And that helped us target the areas that we want to look at this year.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. McKinnon.
Mr. McKinnon. Oh, Mr. Spataw.
So this would be picking up trash that's in the river itself?
Yes.
There's no requirement, like, there's no requirement for, you're not taking any wild rice or anything else?
Any, any.
Wild rice or anything else?
No, certainly not. And I've actually sat in on a couple of meetings with the DEP, with the, with the conservation, with the Towns Conservation Committee. And we talked a little bit about issues of actually pulling, pulling up any vegetation so as to release seeds and things like that that you don't want further down the river. And so we'll actually, before people even set foot on the, in terms of wanting to help, they're going to be taught how to go about taking garbage, what things, we're probably going to be talking more about what not to do than what to do in terms of things that we definitely won't be doing. We won't be doing tree removal. We won't be, there'll be a limit to the size of objects that we'll remove because those objects may be further down into the ground. And there, having directed a few river stewardship projects in the past, especially up in Maine, I can tell you that there's a limit as to what you can have pulled out size-wise, but also in terms of, first thing, first thing is the safety of the volunteers. We don't want canoes tipping over and so forth. So the initial, the initial goal for this first year is to do an initial sweep down, top to bottom, to see what we can get. And if the door is open for other days, we have more volunteers. I have 11, I have eight confirmed volunteers from my staff. I have an apprenticeship program I require from my guides that I staff out for guide services up north and out west. And one of their requirements to be in a, pass my apprenticeship program is to either do a river or trail stewardship project. So I volunteered them for you. Oh, sorry.
I, Dan sent to me about two years ago. And I have worked professionally with him in the last two years. And I can honestly tell you that he follows through with whatever he starts. And when this program goes forward, it's very similar to the mess movers, only it's the water. And Dan has a very extensive background in water, in water quality. And I can honestly tell you that we could not ask for anything better or anyone better to help us try to clean up the riverway and just do the best we can with what we have little funding. And so I highly suggest that we take up, take them up on the offer.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKinnon.
Somebody wants to volunteer. I know Alan, I'm asking this for Alan because I know he wants to jump in the river. But how do, they just contact Badger Wilderness Guides, Inc.? That's it? Or is there a website or?
There is. I passed out my business card on there. I wanted to have just general information for that. One of the reasons for not having my, my letterhead actually on these documents is I would appreciate your imprint on the Nemasket page, thoughts, concerns, anything like that. Because in the end, again, this project will be your project if you want it. And so it being, being that this is the genesis of all this, I would, I, I don't, I don't just say that I'm all about inclusion. I really am, sometimes to a fault. And so I'm also okay with people telling me to maybe back off a little bit or maybe we need assistance in this area or that area. In terms of the types of volunteers, everybody from on-the-river people to, will need support in terms of, we're going to have a thank you cookout at the end of the season as well. So like me, if you bake pies and things like that, those are welcome as well. So that'll, as this project matures a bit, that information will be forthcoming.
Sign me up, Dan.
All right.
Don't lose that.
I already signed you up. I didn't.
You might want to go in front of the Lakeville Water Selectment, see what they say because it is, it's a shared border. I'd be more than happy to go with you whenever you want to do that. I have a canoe you can use. I have wet jackets you can use. I have trash bags you can use. I'll do whatever I can to help make this project move forward. So you have my number.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you very much.
And I have copies. Could I make a motion that we support this activity?
You go right ahead. Motion. Let me just say. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. We have our support.
Thanks, Dan, very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is we have our annual report from the Soul Homestead presented by Frank Albany. Frank, thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Yes, is this the celebrity Frank?
Yeah.
The one that was on TV yesterday and did a wonderful job at Rotary Auction along with everybody else that raised money?
I think it might be one of the same.
Yeah, there we go.
Thanks, Steve. The Rotary Auction's a lot of fun. And as you all know, they do some great work in town, so I'm happy to help. Again, my name's Frank Albaney. I'm the Director of Soul Homestead Education Center. And as previously stated, I'm here to give the Selectman my annual report. I sent some documents in that you, I hope you have to refer to if you want to. I'm going to start with the farm plan, talk briefly about the expansion project that we have going, just review some financial basics up on the screen here. And then I'm going to introduce our Education Director, Laurie Amberman, to talk for a few minutes about children's programs. Then I'll run through the program summary, which is just the general outline of everything we do at Soul Homestead Education Center. And then I'll finish up with this sheet titled Volunteer Hours that shows how much volunteer participation really makes the Soul Homestead run. So I'm going to sit down at the computer and just kind of address the board as I go through the slides. And if anyone has any questions, just, you know, pipe right up and I'll try and answer them.
Thank you.
So on the sheet entitled Farm Plan, the first item is the easternmost fields along Soul Street, approximately 10 acres are rented to this gentleman, Rich Siemens, who's been a fixture at Soul Homestead as long as I have, which is about 17 or 18 years now. And this is a picture from last year's Sheep Day where Rich was doing a sheepdog demonstration. He's a wonderful tenant, very generous with his equipment and his time, and it's wonderful to have him there. I came to Soul Homestead, like I say, about 17, 18 years ago to do some organic farming. And this is one of my fields. This is an old photo, maybe even 10 years old now. I rent, and I still rent, five acres in the back field to do farming. All the staff at Soul Homestead is part-time. I work, I'm paid to work three days a week for the education center and the rest of the time I'm farming. There is another farmer out back, Dave Perpera. And this is, he's got a business called Plato's Harvest. This is one of his helpers here, Stephanie in the picture. This is a little setup they had a few years ago at the Plymouth Farmers Market. Dave also rents land. Dave also rents land out there and he sells not only at the Plymouth Farmers Market but the Harvard Square Farmers Market. And Dave started renting land from Soul Homestead probably about six years ago. And he's just taken off in leaps and bounds. I can't say enough about his hard work and his organizational skills. He's just become an unbelievably accomplished farmer in a very short time. Fields that aren't used for the sheepdogs or the sheep or for the vegetable growing are cut for hay under contract with Rick Burnett of Plimpton. And he and his crew maintain the field perimeters and they put up the hay for Soul Homestead's animals. Some of the fields are used for our sheep and goats. Those are actually Rich's sheep right there. I want to mention this woman right here, Kathy Heimerdinger, Middleborough native. She and her sister Karen, Karen Dusek, founded Soul Homestead Education Center twenty-two years ago. Kathy's parents both passed away and she moved back to the house, well, she grew up in on Thompson Street. So she, after living at Soul Homestead for the last twenty-one years, has moved back down the street, but she's still coming over every morning to do the animal chores as a volunteer. And you'll see the amount of time that she puts in when we get into the volunteer sheet. But I can't say enough about Kathy, she is the heart and soul of Soul Homestead. We have a community garden area. We have about twelve plots that we rent to organic gardeners for a nominal fee. Middleborough High School's special needs students have taken advantage of some of these plots to grow a pumpkin patch for many years and I hope that relationship can continue. Moving on, a couple other items on the farm plan. We have a compost area where residents can drop their leaves in the fall to go into our compost pile. The entire property is managed with organic management practices. One thing, the final item on this farm plan, I'm working with the NRCS, National Resource Conservation Service, which is a branch of the USDA, to upgrade a stream crossing to the backfield. To get to the backfields, we drive through a shallow stream and have, you know, since Soul Homestead took over the property, which is detrimental to vehicles and, you know, doesn't do the stream much good either. The other alternative is coming in from the back access road to the property, which, because I can't really ask, you know, other people to wreck their vehicles, although I destroyed mine by driving through the stream, I've allowed them to come in through the back. And what that does, it's created maybe a half-mile rutted dirt path through the hayfield and it's destroyed a lot of hay. So one of the biggest recommendations from the NRCS was to fix the stream crossing, put some culverts in and dry that up so we're not driving through the water and so we can reclaim that hayfield and we don't have a rutted, muddy road going out to the back through the middle of the field. So we're working with that. I finally got an engineered drawing and I'm going to be looking for some bids on that in the very near future. The farm buildings are used for the traditional uses as the classroom and office and the main barn, the lower level. The first floor of the barn is animal stalls and tool storage, the hay loft for hay, obviously. We have a little building for the sheep, we have a little building for the poultry and a little building that is rented to Dave Perpera for equipment storage in the back of the main barn. Last year, in 2012, if we can skip to the next group of pages, there's six pages of this and most of it you've seen when Soul Homestead applied to renew the lease last year. Most of this information was in that package. I've updated it. On the fourth page, you'll see figures that we spent on the project in 2012. It's page four of six. And just very briefly, basically we added this handicap ramp and finished the flooring and the decking and the railing here out front. We did the rough plumbing and the rough electric for the building. We spent about forty-eight thousand dollars on the project in 2012. And, you know, at this point, I'm looking for some bids to continue work on the project. We have a very heavy-duty electrical underground service now coming, well, not totally underground. The end of this trench over where you see the blue tarps on the far side, there's a telephone pole there. And we swapped the wire that used to come to the other side of the barn and put in this underground trench to feed the new three-hundred-amp panel on the end of the new addition here. So this is just a very basic glimpse at Soul Homestead's operating budget. Right now, or in 2012, the budget was a hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. I think for 2013, we're looking at a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, so pretty much the same this year as it was last year. But you can see where the money comes from and where it goes for Soul Homestead. You know, our income is pretty balanced. We had a hair more income last year than we did expenses, which is always good. But most of our income comes from our harvest fair and special events, membership and donations of which we have, you'll see on the right side, corporate sponsors provide about five thousand dollars of our donations. And you'll see the corporate sponsors listed there. To become a corporate sponsor, we ask for a minimum of a five-hundred-dollar-a-year annual donation. And all these businesses, you know, kick in that much. Program fees, whether it's workshops or, you know, educational programs bring in about twenty percent. Rent on the property, I rent the five acres that I have, you know, have farmed for the last seventeen years. I rent that from Soul Homestead. Rich Siemens rents his property, there's rental on the apartments upstairs in the farmhouse and downstairs. And about five thousand dollars comes from grants every year. On the expense side, obviously the lion's share of our expense is for payroll and payroll taxes and expenses of that nature. Again, that's to pay three part-time employees, that sixty-eight thousand dollar figure. Then the next line, twelve percent of our expenses are donated to the harvest fair, are dedicated to the harvest fair, special events. Then we have just dribs and drabs of other things, maintenance last year was very minor, insurance is about six percent, utilities, sanitation about eight percent, office supplies, five percent, food for the animals, workshop and program expense minimal. So that's pretty much the financial basics of Soul Homestead in a nutshell. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that. Move on. I'd like to introduce our Education Director, Laurie Ammerman, talk for a few minutes. I'll move through a few slides. Laurie's been with us now for about four years and I can't say enough about how she's picked this program up and just developed it far beyond anybody's expectations and I'm very happy to be working with her and have her here tonight.
Well?
I was thinking you would stand before me, but go ahead.
I thought I was going to be in charge of the slides.
It's all yours.
Hi.
Okay. You tell me why.
No, I can. My name is Laurie Ammerman and as Frank mentioned, I have been running the education department for four years. We see over two thousand children. Actually, this year, this past year, it was about thirty-two hundred children. That includes children that actually come to the farm, which was a little over two thousand, and probably about twelve hundred that the farm actually goes to them in outreach programs. One of the biggest outreach programs we have is actually with the town of Middleborough. Last year, we saw every student from grade one to grade five in the Berkland and Mary Kay Good School utilizing their outdoor classroom. It was a great experience for us and I know the children and staff really liked it. I am now known in the schools as the farm lady, so I think that's great. We also do outreach programs to daycare centers that for transportation reasons cannot come to the farm. But our main objective is to get children to the farm and to get them outside in fresh air, in fresh air. This is children actually running from the back stream that Frank mentioned, up the hill, up into the farm land where all the farmers grow their vegetables. We run the programs year-round in all sorts of weather, rain, snow. Here, children are using binoculars from a grant that we got from the Taunton River watershed, so they're looking, we have bird feeders, kind of a captive audience of birds out in the front of the farm in the bird feeders that Kathy fills all the time. She has different feeders with different types of seeds, so we do have a variety of birds that visit the farm. This is one of the nature trails in the back, heading back actually, from the back field to the farmhouse. There's a nice path through there. This is one of the rocks sculptures one of the children made. All the vacation programs are hands-on, interactive, there's a craft component. And here they learned about Inuksek rock statues. This is out in one of the two greenhouses that are on the farm, soon to be three. This is December, actually, and they're planting seeds in the greenhouse. And as you can see on the right, we actually were able to grow, or can grow, cool crops in the greenhouse, lettuce, there's some parsley in the back. Carrots grow in the ground! It's amazing that, especially the elementary school children, when you ask them where their food comes from, my favorite answer is my grandmother's closet and McDonald's. When they leave Soul Homestead, they actually have learned that their food comes from the ground. It comes from farms. And it takes a little bit of poking and prodding to get them from their grandmother's closet to the supermarket, to the farm. And that's what we're all about, is letting people, young children, teenagers, even adults, know that food comes from farms and without farms, we would not have food. This is, besides food, we have farm animals that the children can come and visit. We are open, free to the public, Tuesday through Sunday, nine to five, and you can come and visit the animals. In this particular shot, we're on a vacation program and one of the sheep wandered over to be petted. We also have ducks, bees, chicken, and we have goats. In this slide here, one of the, we actually have a few special needs groups that come to the farm. And for them, it gives them the opportunity to be able to touch the animals and touch wool. They get a, we have a lot of sensory materials that really helps them understand the animals. And you can see there she has a sheet that we kind of point to things and tell her and then they can feel the animals too. And some of them, I noticed you all have iPads, they come with iPads too, the aids, and help them with the sounds. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
Nope, I guess not. Is that it?
Oh, yeah, and I wanted to mention too that all the programs are based on the frameworks of Massachusetts, state frameworks, either in math, history, science, social science.
It sounds like you've had another great year out there.
We have.
And I can't tell you what an asset this is, the town of Middleborough, especially the young people in the town of Middleborough, to give them exposure to an environment, a farm environment like this. A lot of kids don't have that opportunity and we provide it here in Middleborough through your efforts. So again, thank you very much for another great year and I'm sure everybody in town is looking forward to what you're going to be doing out there next year. So thank you, thank you very much.
I'm going to turn it back over to Frank to finish up.
Okay, so Laurie mentioned, you know, the last slide was about a very young special needs group. We have adult special needs groups too. A couple years ago, the Hartwood Apprentice Group, seen here, built a tool shed for us on the farm. And a lot of these people have been through the Middleborough school systems and were coming to the pumpkin patch years prior to, you know, when they joined this group. We do a lot of craft workshops, thirty-five workshops in 2012 and just some beautiful crafts come out of those workshops. If you were, maybe you were tuned into the auction yesterday, Louise Pehewella, towards the end of the afternoon, Sunday, had a quilt, and these are her quilts right here. But at the Rotary Auction, they auctioned off one of her quilts yesterday. Mary Guidaboni, she and her husband Donald used to own the farm. Donald and Mary was a teacher at the Plymouth School Systems and she teaches rug braiding for us now. And Donald milked a hundred, a hundred-twenty cows every day before selling the farm to the town about twenty-five years ago. Another adult workshop, Rick Murphy, friend of ours, does oil painting, landscape painting, and every year he does a landscape painting workshop for us. We have Sheep Day coming up this year, it's May eleventh. It's one of our great events, you know, again, hands-on. The fellow there on the left, the blue sweatshirt, that's Andy Rice, and he comes from Brattleboro, Vermont, and he is pretty much a celebrity in the sheep world. He probably knows every sheep farmer in New England. He's so sought after for his shearing, not only shearing skills, but his entertainment and educational skills. He engages the kids and, you know, gets right in there. Again, Laurie mentioned hands-on, we're all about hands-on. Of course, we're not going to let him shear any sheep, but, you know, he will get them in there to help them, you know, hold the fleece. He'll, you know, explain what he's doing every step of the way. And like any artist that really knows their craft, he makes it look so easy. It's just amazing to watch him. A big component at Soul Homestead is our folk music. We have our summer concert series, Saturday nights in July and August. This year, we have seven concerts scheduled. Of course, our Harvest Fair and Joe Davy's Folk Festival in September. You know, we see over a thousand people every year come through the gates that weekend. Marla Isaacs here, who does owl prowls for us, New England reptiles and raptors, has a good group here at the Harvest Fair. Another shot of the Harvest Fair, we have Dale Perkins' horse show every year, and that's the ring out in the back there that you see. And we have a nature trail, it's well-used. Eagle Scouts, I think two sixty-four Eagle Scouts put this signage together and keep the nature trail maintained. And here's kids leaving it right now, heading back towards the farm. Again, this, my presentation always gives me a chance to plug Sheep Day, being this time of year, so I'm shamelessly promoting our May eleventh event right here. So that's about it. I would like to mention last year, in 2012, on this program summary sheet down towards the bottom, I was joking with Rob DeRozes, who was here earlier, that I wish I could clone a couple of me so we could do some more things. And he'd say, yeah, one of me could go on vacation. But we are very busy, as you can guess. In the middle of this section titled Also on the Program Summary, you'll see we participate in as many community events as we possibly can. The Rotary Auction, obviously, the Craft Fair that's held here at Town Hall in July, the Lakeville Arts Fest, the South Shore Celebration, which is at the Marshfield Fair. Sometimes we participate in the Marshfield Fair, and now Crazy Days is back with us again. again. So, you know, we try and, you know, set up a table and let people know where, who we are and what we do at these events. We work with the library, and one thing Laurie's instituted within the last year is that, we know, you know, if you have kids, a lot of families sometimes can't afford to go to some of these high-priced things. Soul Homestead always tries to keep our program fees and our, you know, event fees very low. But Laurie's actually instituted some free family events a couple, three times a year that's just open to the public and at no charge, just to get people to come to the farm and enjoy the outdoors and see what we're all about. The last sheet is the volunteer hours for 2012. If you just look at the totals, four thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight hours is what it adds up to. That's like having almost two and a half full-time staff people, if you add the work that's done by volunteers. Soul Homestead is a volunteer-driven organization. We couldn't do what we do without having so many people involved. And every aspect of our program involves volunteers. And, you know, I can't say enough about all the people that help out and the dedication of our board of directors. Couple of whom are here with me tonight, Bob Nichols, our newest board member, Jeanne McLaughlin, who's just voted on in the last two months. Thanks for coming, you guys. So, that's pretty much my report for this year. Thank you all for your support. And if there's anything we can do, feel free to ask.
Well, I think you're doing plenty for our community. I also want to thank the volunteers. I mean, almost five thousand hours of volunteer help is just tremendous, and it shows what kind of community Middleborough really is. So, again, thank you for everything you do out there. I can't say it enough, it's a wonderful asset the town has, and you're doing a terrific job out there. I just hope it continues forever. Anybody else want to make some comments? Mrs. Spatare?
At the beginning of the process, when the town took over the farm, there was a significant amount of money in excess of a million dollars. And there was a time period where the bond was questioned on whether or not it could be saved. And to see the work that's been done over numerous number of years, and most recently under Frank's direction, and all the volunteers that have helped, just to see the building that, even though you're not done, the addition, which was talked about, and it was like, how are they going to do it on the budget that they have? And to see it coming to fruition in reality is just great, because there was that time period where people questioned whether or not the farm was a good investment or not. And I don't think that anybody would make that type of a question any longer, and it's from all the work that you folks do, and you should all be commended. If you had a Middleborough file, I'd be putting a letter of support in there, just teasing these guys up front here, because they say always put a letter in there. It's an outstanding work that you folks do, and thank you as volunteers.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Spatare, Mr. Rulo said. You guys do a fantastic job. I love the carrots come from the ground. I mean, my kids, I try to teach them as much as possible about that, but time and time again, people think, you know, it comes from the supermarket. It's just not that way. You have a candle-making workshop coming up?
Yeah, that's true. I think it's March thirtieth. Tracy Mozeli, and I saw Tracy here earlier. Jane's here, of course, another board member. But a board member, Tracy Mozeli, is going to be doing a candle-making workshop, March thirtieth. If you go to the website, you click on our calendar of events or whatever, you know, it's complete information. Again, another volunteer, webmaster, Michael Brother, does a great job with the website, keeping everything up to date.
And you have a, you have a recycling day coming up, too, don't you?
Yeah, April thirteenth, we'll have electronics and appliance recycling right here at the Town Hall parking lot, from ten to two. We charge a minimal fee to recycle those things. You know, quite honestly, we try and keep it a little bit less than people would have to pay if they brought it to the dump, to give them some incentive, you know, to help us with our fundraising.
And did I hear you say if it's got a plug, you can bring it down?
Yeah, pretty much. If anything with a plug, you know, we'll take it, we'll figure out, you know. But again, it's all nominal charges.
And your website is www.soulhomestead.org?
Yeah, that's us.
All right, thanks again for everything.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKinn?
On your website, is there one of those little magical buttons that somebody could electronically press to make a donation?
Not yet, but we're working on it.
We're working on that?
But we'd be happy to accept the check.
You'll take it by check? Small in-mark bills?
Yeah.
Any of that kind of thing?
You can take it right now.
All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. You all set? We'll just let them clean up in a moment, and then we'll get started with the next item.
Probably why I was in the corner.
Exactly. Yeah?
We're going to get started here in a minute, we're just setting up the necessary material Okay, looks like we're just about ready. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Environmental Partners Group Inc., where the annual Town Meeting Warren Article Number Fifteen. Environmental Partners Group Inc. is a project we moved here for the new improved wastewater treatment plant. How you doing? Hi, thanks.
Mikey, do you want to stand closer to the...
You can just move that mic.
Just move the mic over there.
Let me just read Article Fifteen, so we all know what this is about. Article Fifteen says, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer some of money from taxation, free cash, other specific available fund, the stabilization fund, any existing appropriation or account, or other available source, or by buying for all relevant and necessary expenses associated with the design of the upgrade to the wastewater treatment facility for the wastewater department, or act anything on." Our next permit for the wastewater treatment plant is coming up soon, and the requirements have changed. A more stringent requirement on the level of nitrogen and phosphates that we put back into the Masquet River, so.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Paul Milllett, M-I-L-L-E-T-T, for Environmental Partners. About a month ago, we had a briefing session over in Charlie's office to go over this project. The handout I've given you summarizes what we spoke about a month ago, and we'll deal with what we're going to handle tonight. As you mentioned, this project is driven by a pending EPA permit. The dischargeers from wastewater treatment plants are governed by what's called a NFTES permit, which governs the degree of quality a wastewater treatment plant must achieve to produce an effluent. In short, the new NFTES permits are going to be heavily regulated on nitrogen and phosphorus, which can act as fertilizers in rivers and streams and cause algal blooms and fish kills and other negative environmental impacts. What this means to Middleborough is, the current plant meets its current permit, but the old permit is five years old and then some. As I mentioned a month ago, the EPA has been talking about revising the NFTES permits for over five years. Very slow process, they've been dealing with most of the bigger plants in the Commonwealth first, and then dealing with the smaller communities. A month ago, when we met across the hallway, we weren't sure when the EPA was going to get to Middleborough. By coincidence, and we certainly didn't contact them because that was part of our strategy, they are coming to town on Thursday. We are having a meeting at the treatment plant on Thursday morning with Charlie, Todd, and myself, EPA and DEP, to talk about the permit status. At that time, we will have more information on what the real nitrogen and phosphorus levels are for the new permit. Our role as the owner's project manager is to, basically to defend your interests on the job. We have issued a request for proposals for an engineering company, or firms, to design the upgrades to the plant that RFQ was on the street last month. We received four responses last week, and this week, we're going to be interviewing the four firms who submitted proposals for the project. It's a qualifications-based selection, and after we choose a firm in the next couple of weeks, we will then negotiate a contract. The general schedule is, once a firm is on board by July first, pending Town Meeting approval, if it is successful, the design will start. Let me just briefly run through what we are doing at the plant, and then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to stop and talk to them. I'm going to briefly describe just the process, not get too bogged down in engineering or wastewater treatment details, but more importantly, talk about the schedule and the cost and what we can do to manage costs. The existing plant is, was built in the late seventies, it's a classical wastewater treatment plant. It works very well despite its lack of automation and lack of computer controls. It actually is a very robust plant. It's like a big old Ford Crown Victoria, runs very well, not very efficient, but it meets its current effluent requirements. There's a lot of unused space in the plant. Probably the best way to put this is on this board. You got all these photographs are in your handout. The existing plant in here has a very large unused aeration basin. There are four long rectangular basins, of which one is used right now. The plant was designed for a lot more flow than the plant currently sees, which actually is a good thing. We were able to come up with a plan whereby we can reuse a lot of the space in the aeration basins and convert the space and give us better processes to remove nitrogen and phosphorus. Our goal is to provide Todd and the staff a brand-new mechanical equipment. All of the rotating equipment, the aerators, the clarifiers, the pumps are at least thirty years old, they're past their useful life, and spare parts are almost impossible to come by. Todd can tell you some stories about the recent problems with the solids dewatering device to compress the sludge. That was down about a month ago and took several weeks to find spare parts. So the equipment is old, it served the town very well, and despite the best efforts to maintain it in good condition, it is, quite frankly, at the end of its useful life. Our plan is to keep the existing shell of the aeration basins and convert them into what's called a five-stage Bardon-Fo process. A Bardon-Fo process briefly is a name for a process to remove nitrogen and phosphorus sequentially. This figure here on the bottom, Bardon-Fo was named after a engineer called James Barnard. He took the first three letters of his name, B-A-R. He wasn't an Irish guy, but he was a South African guy. It's Bar, B-A-R for Barnard, D-Nite for denitification, and P-O for phosphorus. So Bardon-Fo is a way to remove nitrogen and phosphorus using this process. It's been around since the eighties, it's used all over the world, it's a reliable process, and it will reduce our nitrogen and phosphorus to below what the new permit might be. The current plant's nitrogen is in the twenties, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven parts per million. The new permit will either be eight, five, or three. So the nitrogen levels leaving the plant are way beyond what the new permit will be. The phosphorus levels of the plant are just above what the new permit might be. They're about point one-five, point-two. The new permit will be, we think, about zero-point-one. I guess one other way to look at the improvements are, if the EPA didn't even exist here, there would be significant improvements needed at the plant to replace all the equipment. It's either rusted out, or it's unfixable, or passed its useful life. There's at least ten to fifteen million dollars' worth of improvements just to get the plant back to its existing shape, not even including the improvements to get it to the better shape to give you better nitrogen and phosphorus removal. For example, electrically, the systems are old, the insulation is broken down on some of the conductors, there's at least two million dollars' worth of electrical improvements needed at the plant. On the control system, a plant uses a lot of oxygen and dissolved oxygen sensors to control blowers and mixers. There's at least half a million dollars needed to upgrade or install dissolved oxygen monitors, probes, and sensors. So our plan is to reuse the existing plant, convert the old basins into a Bardon-Fo process, reuse the old clarifiers. The clarifiers are busy, big circular tanks, and I certainly would encourage you guys to come out and look at the plant. It's not a very attractive tour, but it's important to have a flavor for what a sewage plant is all about. By being able to use the old shells, the old concrete in the tanks, we're able to save a lot of money. A new plant, by comparison, would be thirty-five to fifty million dollars, in that range. So our price is about one-third less than the cost of a new plant. The new plant will be more efficient than the old plant. We've been talking to the electric department, they've been out there to do an energy audit. The plan is to, obviously, make the new plant as energy-efficient as possible with high-efficiency motors. The existing plant motors are just turned on, they run at full speed. They do a good job, but there's a lot of energy wasted, not because the operators do a poor job, just because by virtue of the old technology. For example, the new mixers and blowers will have adjustable speed controls to be able to adjust their level of power consumption based on the amount of wastewater coming into the plant. Other parts of the process, we're going to be putting in, you know, a ultraviolet disinfection system, we're going to be putting in new windows, doors, and a new roof on three of the buildings. I'd say basic bread-and-butter improvements. It's not a very lavish expansion, most of the money is in mechanical equipment, electrical equipment, control devices, equipment that you need to produce better wastewater. Our plan right now is to go for, is to, once we have a designer on board, and part of our design, our, the RFQ that we wrote for design is based on our report, which says, we have a maximum amount of money of twenty-seven million dollars, including contingency, for this project. So the designer who we choose in the next couple of weeks, in their contract, there is a cost limit saying, this job cannot cost any more than twenty-seven million dollars, including contingency. And that's, so that's upfront in the design contract. We're not the designer, we're the owner's project manager. Our job is to make sure that the designer stays on schedule, does a good job, doesn't over-design it. We will be involved with construction oversight and have our man in the field for a couple of years, that's the duration of the project. That's really the essence of my presentation. We are, there is no emergency generator out there right now. There is a small generator, but it's grossly undersized, so when the power goes out, I guess it's happened several times in the past few months, the plant is basically cooked. Thankfully, the existing tanks have enough capacity to store sewage as it comes in until the power comes back on, and Todd's been able to kind of nurse the plant back to full health again. We will be putting in a real full-size, four-hundred KW generator to be able to provide full backup power and better of a power outage. So the key to our approach is to reuse as much space as we can, reuse the old concrete tankage, do some modest improvements to windows, doors, and roofs, and to make sure the designer is working within a very fixed budget. The approximate schedule is, it'll take about a year to do the design, once somebody starts on July first, if the article is approved at Town Meeting. Probably two years of construction. The phasing will be tricky, as we turn off Tank One, then turn on Tank Two, turn off Tank Three, turn on Tank Four, because we're working around a live wastewater plant. That's about it.
Will this retrofit the, will this increase the capacity of the plant? Or is plant capacity going to stay relatively the same?
It's going to stay the same. The plant right now treats, on average, a little over one... The plant right now treats on average a little over 1 million gallons a day if you average it out over the whole year. It's currently seeing in the springtime, 2.5, 3, 2.5, 3, 4 million gallons in the springtime, which is typical of New England plants. You get a lot of rain, and you get a lot of leaky pipes giving you wastewater that shouldn't be in your pipes. But on an average year basis, it's a little over 1 million gallons. The current permit from the EPA is for 2.1 million gallons, so we believe we'll have, we'll still have reserved capacity in the plant for expansion if the source system is expanded. But at this time, we're not looking for a major expansion.
And this article will be asking for 27 million? Is that what it is?
No, it's just for the design.
Oh, just for the design phase? And how much will that be?
Given the fact that we're about to negotiate or review four proposals and choose a firm and then negotiate a fee, I'd rather not give a number, because once I give out a number, this firm X is going to know what our target number is, to be quite candid with you.
We're going to need a number for 27?
You'll have a number in the next two or three weeks. As a percentage, I could say, design fees range between 7% and 12% of a project as a planning-level number, but we want to negotiate that with the chosen design firm.
Mr. Chair?
Any other questions? Mr. McKinnon?
Sir, I saw your present, I was in the room for your presentation the other night, and one of the topics discussed was test borings of the tanks to make sure that the walls were what they were supposed, or what they were stated as. Has that been accomplished?
No, we haven't. In the past month, between the rain and snow and ice and everything else, we have not done any more work out there. Before May, we will be doing more test cores of the walls to make sure the concrete is in durable condition.
Good.
The past month has been difficult.
The empty tanks were all full now.
Steve, I couldn't hear you. Could you come up here, Todd? Thank you.
Due to the recent rain and snow melt, all those empty tanks that they were going to do the boring zone are full. Probably going to take at least a month and a half before we get all those empty again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Spataro?
We've had the presentation, but there may be people that are not fully understanding what we're doing. Like, $27 million, when we originally talked about it, it was 30 to potentially 40 million, maybe 45 million. Charlie, might you just give a brief couple of sentences or a couple of minutes on the challenge that we have on wastewater? We have a, you know, the limited population that uses the surge, that we don't have a larger reserve because we've been keeping the rates down. So, this is basically $27 million coming from a starting point of zero. So, the idea of keeping the expenses down and how creative the project managers have been to try to come up with something that didn't approach the high side of the range that we had.
No, yeah, absolutely. And that's been a focus, you know, from day one, is to continue to, you know, put pressure on the total cost and to do this for as low a price as we can. And that'll be part of the discussions we have with all the designers this week, is, you know, what are your ideas for, you know, not only keeping this cost within budget, but bringing it down even further? Because we'd like to do this, you know, as cost-efficiently as possible. And that's been, you know, something we've talked about, you know, in hiring environmental partners, you know, to do this, and we'll be continuing to, we've got two separate sessions of...
Value engineering?
Value engineering, thank you, to focus particularly on cost and to work on, you know, once the design progresses, you know, finding, you know, cheaper ways of doing things.
So, while everybody's seen their bills go up, you know, clearly the management of town manager and superintendent and our wastewater treatment director are all understanding that we're trying to do as much as we can for as little as possible, and yet leave the design open so that if we do see the growth, there's the opportunity to expansion, and nobody's saying, "Well, we didn't build in..."
Correct.
"...the opportunity to expand if we needed to." So, I think this is a tremendous effort, and it was shown in the few hours that we had, is the workshop of an effort to try to get something that's basically for half of what the high side of the range might be.
Yeah, I mean, it really was, you know, when we, when the people built and paid for this plant in the 70s, they built a very, you know, robust plant, as Paul said. It's, you know, got a lot of capacity there, and by making that investment a long time ago, it's going to save us money now going forward because we have that capacity to use.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I think one of the topics that was discussed the other night in the meeting was also the savings that would come from the spending a lot of money, but putting it into a plant to make it more energy-efficient.
Yes.
And also, there's chemistry that you're doing different, so you wouldn't have to buy some of the chemicals that they have to buy now.
Yes. On the energy front, we are doing the energy audit with the electric and gas department. The plan is to say that the current bill is, you know, X. The new bill will be X minus 20% or whatever the number will be. The chemical standpoint, if by not using for final disinfection of the effluent, the plant currently uses bleach followed by bisulfide to cut back the bleach, by using ultraviolet light, we can get rid of two chemicals. We can kill the bugs, if you will, and get rid of two liquid chemicals. So, we are, there should be some operating cost savings by using better processes to achieve the same function.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, you had a question?
Yeah, my name is Brian Gibboni. I had a comment. I liked the fact that one of the requirements was to hire an engineer to really watch out for the town's best interest, because I know when the first comments were made a few years back talking about this plant was, all the engineers are designing it up to get their fee up. Well, with this process, the way it's set up now, environmental partners can't bid on the design, because there are engineers watching out for our pocketbook, is going to keep this process down, like Slukas Spataro said, and that, you know, half of the high side, which, thank God, because that high side was choking a lot of people. But we're already at a max number here where we're going to do some value engineering. And I wouldn't doubt to see maybe some of the other engineers come up with some slick ideas and might even shave a little bit more off of it. So, that's a positive for our community, and I'm thankful that Environmental Partners is on board with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Chair? Mr. Thrower?
Through you to Charlie, and we're still exploring, obviously, the low-interest door.
Yeah, yeah, we have a meeting. This is just long.
Yeah, this week, we have a meeting with DEP in their offices to talk about that.
All right. So, you need a vote to support this article?
Some move.
Second. Have motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, we'll be supporting this article. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
And just a reminder, we are working on having a site visit to the plant on Saturday, April...
That is good for you.
Okay. I think we looked at the...
April 6th, I believe.
Yeah. The 6th. So, I think in the morning, April 6th in the morning, so people can come and, you know, kick the tires, so to speak.
April 6th and go to the sewer plant.
Go swimming in the pools. I wouldn't recommend bringing your bathing suit, but...
[laughing].
And I don't know about getting a flavor for the pool either.
Not one of mine.
So, we'll get you more information on that as we work on that.
Here we go. All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is it's time for the town manager's annual performance review. So, with that, I think what we'll do is I'll give a general overall review of our town manager for the past year. And this overall review is based, every selectman did a review, and I just merely summarized them and came up with averages. Just so that everybody knows, it's about five or six categories, and I'll go through, let's see, two, four, there's five categories that we rate them on. The scale is one to three, three being the best score, one being poor score. Well, Charlie, you had another great year, according to the Board of Selectmen. On average, averaging all the scores through all the categories, you got a 2.7 out of three. So, it's another strong year. Most members had very favorable comments regarding your performance the past year, but no one's perfect. So, there are a few areas that the Board felt that you could work on. Board communications, you had a 2.8, and this is effective communication with the Board, availability to the Board, responsiveness to suggestions, plans, and organizers presents in a clear and concise and comprehensive manner, all of those. The strengths were that you've developed a strong and open line of communication with the school department. That started a couple of years ago, and it continues, and it's very important for the town and the school to be on the same page and to understand what the town and what the school is trying to accomplish, and having a good relationship with the superintendent goes a long way to getting us there. You've done that, and the Board recognizes that. You build a consensus amongst Board members, but also you respect each member's perspective. So, you try to build a consensus, but you'll listen, and not all, there are times when the five of us don't agree. That happened tonight, but we move on, you know. So, again, you scored very highly there. Some of the weaknesses that the Board had mentioned was the quality sometimes of the mats are not of the highest quality. We have the ability to generate higher quality, so when we have the need to have those mats, maybe we could use the GIS system to do that. And sometimes the follow-through on some of those short-term objectives fell short. The IT function, electronic timing, fell behind our original schedule, but it's on track now, and you get it back there. So, we may have some slips and falling behind short-term, but we always manage to stay on track and we'll get it done. Community relations, you got a 2.7. These, this category talks about, again, effectively communicates with the Board policy to the public, works with the news media to get that communication out, responsive to citizens' complaints, general attitude of the community to the manager is positive. So, the only weakness that was pointed out here is needs to use media more effectively to communicate to a larger portion of our citizens. That was one of the comments on the Board as a weakness. It's a way of getting the word out in a much to maybe a larger audience than just communicating here at our Board meetings. Mr. Chairman?
I just had just a question on your comment.
Sure.
When we say weakness on a 2.8 on a three-scale, what's probably areas of improvement?
That's fine. I'm just going with what was on the sheet itself. They call them weaknesses and strengths. Like, the scale was one to three as opposed to one to five.
You going to bring that up again?
Why not? But again, you rated very high. Leadership ability, 2.5. Again, the strengths was, well, it's interesting. Some of the Board members felt that you were a little slow in reacting to personnel issues in town, and others felt that you acted timely on that issue. So, I guess there's a mixed feeling on that particular issue. Displayed strong leadership skills in contract negotiations, and the, you know, the example cited here was the Edgeway Agreement, the rotary discussions, and legal issues related to Tis McQuinn. Very rarely does a Board get surprised on any issue. Managerial effectiveness, again, very high, 2.8. Again, very strong marks on the financial issues, that you do a, you're really strong in recognizing and managing our financial issues in town, so you had a good grade there. Managerial effectiveness, 2.8. And the last one was personal and professional traits, 2.9. Just, again, outstanding job. There are a couple of issues that were mentioned here, again, dealing with personnel issues and the ability to react timely to when those issues pop up. But in general, another great review. And I want to thank you for your work for the town of Middleborough. Again, like I said, great job, and the Board appreciates it. With that, I'll turn it over to individual selectmen to make any comments they feel necessary. Mr. McKinnon, do you have any, anything you'd like to add?
Why, yes. I think I would.
I wouldn't expect so.
I did rate you down a little bit on my, and I hate this. This is, this is my fourth time we've done this, and doing a review for an employee, if you would, in public is about the worst thing you can imagine. But I did, I will do it, because we're supposed to. I did rate you down as far as your interaction in response to some of your managers. I think that you could be more, I guess controlling may not be the right word, but I think some of the managers have more free-range abilities than they may have warranted. Maybe they need to be reeled in a little bit. So, that would be the place where I would recommend that you change. But I, as far as negotiations with the unions go, I think that's been going great. So, I'd like to see you reel some of your managers in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Mr. Spataro?
I understand what Steve's saying. I did not have the same concern. I, you know, my managers are unionized, and so I think, at least for me personally, how you might do it in the private sector without a union to deal with versus a union situation, I felt might have been that delay that Steve's talking about. So, I felt confident that within the parameters of the things that Charlie had to deal with in dealing with personnel issues, because everybody in, seems like in public government is fast-assumed, they think they're not getting their fair share. And yet, I observed Charlie managing situations that probably weren't seen by the public in the mixed, but I am fashion with minimum negative influence on the town, either financially or as the operations ran. So, again, I think one of the things that Charlie did very well is, there's five of us. We don't always agree. We have our best interest at heart, yet we all have other jobs that we're doing. So, sometimes we think that we have the answer, including myself included, I'm not blaming anybody but myself, and not being in here full-time, that there'd be items in the decision process that I didn't fully understand, which Charlie had to educate us on, because it'd be possible to make a decision that sounded good based on our high-time involvement on behalf of the town, which in fact was not the way to go. And so, Charlie didn't make fast decisions. He didn't try to shut the town up, or he provided the rest with additional information so that more times than not, we came to the safe conclusion he did, because we had all the data points, and that wasn't always the case in different environments. And again, the fact that we go to town meeting with a full support of the Finance Committee, and there's none of, this is our budget, that's their budget, it doesn't seem to be any adversarial departments that are off doing their own thing. And Charlie was as active as anybody else, bringing the GME to the forefront of our attention for the town and the citizens to take action, for some of the expenses that we potentially could have incurred at the GME, I took close. Again, we've often had managers, on behalf of the town manager, come forward with, "Well, I don't like what I'm getting from the budget. You know, I need this, I need that." Everybody in the last budgeting process was very respectful of the situation that we were in financially, and while they wanted more, they understood when it was clear that they weren't going to get it. And Charlie... And Charlie kept everybody from breaking rank, which could happen when different boards are negotiating contracts. So he was able to line up everybody to be able to do that. And I think that's yeoman's work. And it's not just financial, which he's good at numbers, but it's also people management of all the, people were coming to Charlie for guidance and to make sure that everything lined up in situations where there was no formal reason to do that. And for that, I thought that was outstanding.
Thank you. Mr. Frawley?
Sure. I can certainly understand where Mr. McKinnon's coming from. I'd like to see you be a little bit firmer in some situations with personnel, but I think overall, as far as I'm concerned, you're doing a great job. And this is going to sound odd, but like I appreciated the phone call on Saturday to give me the heads up about what was going on. I know that you're working on Saturday, but that wasn't, I wouldn't call that an emergency, but I certainly appreciated the heads up so I could get in front of the situation and it did save us, I think, you know, a lot of grief. Well, it prevented some headaches that we could have run into. So those are the types of things that could stick out for me. And I've said this before and I'll say it every time, when I randomly show up at a committee meeting and you're not supposed to be there and you're there, that speaks volumes for me. I can't say enough about your job performance when, you know, I go to a school committee meeting and for no other reason other than you know it's a good place for you to be at that time, even though it's seven o'clock at night on a Thursday night and you've been here all day anyway. That really means a lot to me and to be quite honest with you, it really means a lot to the people who are paying attention to these things, to the townsfolk. Appreciate your dedication when they see you and I've heard them say, go home now. So I really, I appreciate it and I know that townspeople will pay attention, appreciate it too, so thank you.
Mr. Quell?
Well, I don't think anybody can argue that you have a very unique profession and what you're required to do. Most importantly, you've managed to continue to operate this town within a budget, a balanced budget. And I think that is always going to be at the forefront for me and most people. And it hasn't been easy for you to do, as we saw tonight. As far as, you know, some of the department heads and concerns, I understand you can't just go charging in there like we see in the private sector and take the bull by the horns. There is a union involved and there's processes in place that need to be dealt with in order for you to try to get involved in some of those things. And I think you've done that, you handled it very well. I was very excited to see how things came out with the union contracts. Not very easy and those things can go sideways on you real quick and I think that you have a really, really strong relationship with the union heads and I think that your communication with them is very positive and always moving forward. I know that we've had some distractions, as I call them, you know, when it comes to issues with court. We talked about these things in the executive session and I know that a lot of these things would just be avoidable, but unfortunately, these things do wind up in court. And I think that you've done a very good job of working with town manager, excuse me, with town council to ensure that we're really picking and choosing things that we should get involved in on a legal standpoint to make sure that our legal costs are kept at a low roar. And I know that we've done that. I mean, these are court cases that the town should have gone to court on, that it was the right thing to do. So overall, it's been a, I think, a very positive year for us moving forward. We're going to have a lot of new challenges, but I think that you've always, you know, stayed out of the, you know, I know that we've had some things come up that can get kind of ugly, but you don't get caught up in it and I'm glad you don't. And I'm, I just think that you know when to step in, like, you know, tonight with the letter and stuff. I understand you're in a tough situation there. You're responsible for sort of greasing the wheels of Beacon Hill and making sure that you maintain a real smooth line of communication with our legislators. And I think you're doing a fabulous job of that, so I don't want you to think that I'm not, that I don't notice that. So I'd just say continue doing with what you're doing. I've been very, very happy and I think that we're just in a very, very unique situation in a positive way to have you as our town manager. I sure hope you're not planning on going anywhere. Thank you very much.
Great.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Spataro?
Just one other comment. We've seen in the paper of towns around us where the town manager and the Board of Selectmen are large. And Charlie's done a good job of following our lead. Sometimes we follow his, sometimes he follows us. And if we dig our heels in on something that we absolutely disagree with him on, we still take the vote. Whether the decision is, Charlie executes on it. We don't get what we often refer to as the Heisman, you know, yeah, I'm going to do that, you know, or the nod, yes, I'm going to do that and everybody's, you know, I'll tell you yes, but I'll do no. We have not found that, haven't had that the whole time that Charlie's been here. So I think that while he's proved to be a strong town manager, he respects the organization structure of town meeting and town government and when the people have voted through us as their representatives and make a decision, he implements. I mean, clearly he enlightens us if, during the decision-making process, if there's some subtle things that we don't fully understand, but once a decision's made, we've never had to really go back and do the decision again to satisfy him. He understands the decision and he implements. So it's been pretty smooth that way. We haven't wasted a lot of cycles on revisiting things because of disagreement.
Thank you. Well, thank you for all the comments. I think Mr. McKinnon mentioned this. I've never, four years now I've done this. It's the first time I've ever had to, once I was on as Board of Selectmen, to give a public evaluation of an employee's performance. It's difficult for those giving the evaluation and it's difficult for the individual receiving it. I don't particularly like the process. I understand why it has to be done, but it's not very, it just makes everybody feel uncomfortable, I think. But when you have an individual like Mr. Cristella who performs the way he does, it makes this a lot easier. And certainly you've made my job here for the past four years a lot easier and I truly appreciate it. I've enjoyed working with you. You're a true professional and you've done the town well. You've really done wonderful things for this town and we all appreciate it, not only this board, but the citizens of Middleburg. So stay here for a long time, Charlie, we need you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I just might, and I, you know, always getting feedback is helpful and, you know, there's always room for improvement and I hear your comments and I will take them to heart and learn from them. I've enjoyed working for this board. You've been, you know, a pleasure to work with because, you know, we could have disagreements and the next day we can go out and work on something else together and nothing gets carried over. You know, it's been a very, you know, positive experience for me and, you know, I thank you for all your positive comments as well. But I'll also, you know, pass some of that off to our staff and our department heads who have been also very supportive and, you know, very helpful and esteem-y doing what you want me to do. So again, I enjoy working with you and I, hopefully this will continue for quite some time.
Well, yeah, so thank you. With that, I'm not going to allow any public comment on this item. Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to the town manager's report.
Just, we had one item, a carryover, which I had forgotten about, but there was a question about where we stood with Auburn Street and the Tracy matter and the deadline there is April 15th. I did happen to take a ride up to Auburn Street last week just to see for myself how things were progressing and there's even more junk and debris out there than there ever was before, unfortunately. I saw a couple of vehicles that looked like they were being offloaded to be disassembled and so it appears pretty clear that not a lot is going on up there. So come April 15th, we'll make sure we go up there and, you know, take our, you know, assessment of it and report back to the court and pursue it further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Last item is correspondence. We'll start with Mr. Frawley this evening.
I think I'm good.
You're all set?
Oh, I just wanted to mention the Habitat for Humanity for Greater Plymouth, their annual gala, hot wine and cheese, or jazz, I'm sorry, Friday, May 3rd at Pine Hills Golf Club, 7:30 to 11:00. Tickets, $50, $35 before April 1st. And they're available at www.hfhplymouth.org, Habitat for Humanity Plymouth.org. And there's a number here too, if anybody wants more information, they can get in touch with me and I'll forward the info on to them. But that's a great, great program.
Thank you. Mr. Quell?
Just Charlie, any updates or changes to that, well, notice of project change from landfill, anything different than what's been discussed?
No, no, they're just, you know, these are the regulatory things that they're going through to, you know, put everything into place to, you know, redesign and, you know, implement the agreement that we have with them.
Okay.
One thing related to that, it was, we will be having a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day on June 22nd. It's a little far off, so we'll, you know, remind people again as we get closer to that, but just in case people have been holding on to things that they want to get rid of, there will be a day where they can do that right here in Middleburg.
Great, thank you. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes, well, I was going to mention that, but now that you've already taken the wind out of my sails.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. Can we put the list of items on the website?
Yeah, this is already on the website.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, both pieces are on the website.
Okay. Well, that's all I had, so.
Mr. Spataro?
I'll say.
Chair is all set.
With that, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. A motion in a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.